Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Before we stand for the pledge, it's something new. Um, in case you didn't know, we started this year where we have a student from different schools around the district come in. And they say the pledge for us before each board meeting. So tonight we have Cora Watts. She's a second grade student at Atkinson in Mrs. Buchanan's class. Their parents are Melinda Watts and Kevin Geddes. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance and Cora will lead us in that. All right, roll call please. Bloom?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Nally?
Here.
Right.
Here.
I get a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting held January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
Full move.
Motion by Ms. Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis, any discussion? Roll call please. Lehman?
Yeah.
Lewis?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Nally?
Yes.
Price? Yes, motion's approved. Um, so next we're gonna jump a little bit out of the order of on the agenda and we'll go right to the stellar students.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Um, as I stated at the beginning, this evening, we are very honored to have our stellar students acknowledged on behalf of our Learning and Liberty Foundation. So this evening, we will be bringing forth students in grades one, two, and three. So we will call all of the students down by grade level, one grade level at a time, and they'll meet with us over here in the corner. And then we have high school students who are members of Learning and Liberty that will be joining us to read off the names and a little bit of information about all of our students. And then we'll gradually bring those students forward, we'll present them with their award, and then at the end, they're gonna stay right here at the end of the stage. And we will have some opportunity for some pictures real quick. So parents and guardians, you will be able to grab that group picture of the whole grade level before we send them back and then we'll start again with the next grade level. So if I could have, um, well, first of all, I guess I want to also acknowledge my high school Learning and Liberty students. And a big thank you to Jadrian, Jackson, and Ashton for joining us this evening and being prepared to read off our names. Greatly appreciate their extra time and energies this evening. If we could have all of our first grade students come forward and they're gonna join us right down here at the end of the table, please, all of our first grade students.
First, we have Bryn Ruett, daughter of Mandy and Richard Ruett. She is a first grade student in Mrs. Lynn Schrader's class. Bryn loves to take ballet and tap dance class. She really likes unicorns. At school, she likes math the best, but Bryn also enjoys reading. Mrs. Schrader feels she would do great things when she grows up. Bryn was selected as a, as her class's stellar student because she is a leader in the classroom. She finishes her, her work easily and looks for others who might need help. Every morning Bryn comes in with a smile on her face, excited to see what her class will be doing that day. She always has a book in her hand, setting a good example for the, for the others that reading is important. Bryn stated, learn all the math you can so that when, so that when you grow up, you can do well. Congratulations and thank you Bryn. Next is Delaney Jackson, daughter of, of Kayla Houston. She is a first grade student in, in Andy Carrick's class. Delaney enjoys painting and coloring. She also enjoys spending time playing soccer. Delaney was selected as her class's stellar student because she is very polite and eager to learn. She, she readily accepts new challenges and is a great role model, great role model for her peers. Her teacher feels it is a pleasure having her in her class. Delaney said, I like learning about math and I'm, I'm very good at writing. I like school and I have good friends. Congratulations and thank you, Delaney. Next is Mara Echoberry, daughter of Marina and Kyle Echoberry. She is a first grade student in Mrs. Yoder's class. Mara likes playing basketball. She plays on Saturdays and with her brother and sister. Her favorite subject is math. Mara was selected as a classes, as her class's stellar student because she is an excellent student. She works hard on, on all of her assignments, handing in neat and complete work. Mara was also selected due, due to her kindness to others, to others around her. She helps her friends in many ways and is always ready to give a hug or encouragement to a friend in need. When Mara was asked about why it is important to come to school, Mara stated, everyone needs to learn, if you want to be a teacher, you have to know how to learn. I want to be a teacher like my mom and you need to go to school to learn and be smart. Congratulations and thank you Mara. Next is Gianna Escavell, daughter of Amanda and Wesley Escavell. She is a first grade student in, in Miss Quam's class. Gianna loves to play volleyball, read, and to color. She loves her family and spending time with her sister. Gianna was chosen as her class's stellar student because she is a leader in her first, in her first grade classroom. She is always kind to both peers and adults. Gianna is a friend to everyone, she is always willing to help others. Gianna comes to school ready to learn each day and her enthusiasm to learn is spread, is spread to students around her. She is a hard worker and an excellent example of a stellar student. Gianna stated, my favorite part of school is doing my morning work and eye ready. Congratulations and thank you, Gianna. Next is Kinsley Stein, daughter of Amanda and Zachary Stein. She is a first grader, she's a first grade student in Lori Ozenman's class. Kinsley enjoys completing art and craft projects. In the summer, she loves riding her bike, playing baseball, and swimming in her pool. At home, she, she likes playing the games, the game piles, the game piles, hide and seek, and playing with her dog Bowie. Kinsley was selected as her class's stellar student because she is an outstanding student who puts for, who puts a tremendous amount of effort into her schoolwork. She is a very responsible student who exhibits terrific leadership skills. Being highly motivated, she sets a wonderful example for the whole class. She consistently strives to do her best, she sets high standards for herself, and she works hard to achieve them. She has a terrific attitude about school and learning. Her teacher feels it is a pleasure having Kinsley in her classroom. Kinsley stated, my favorite part of the week is going to art, I like to paint and draw pictures. Congratulations and thank you, Kinsley. Next is Riley Lehman, daughter of Stephanie Benavides. She is a first grade student in, in Miss Larg's class. Riley enjoys soccer and gymnastics. Riley was selected as a, as a stellar student because she is an awesome example for her first grade peers. She is kind, hardworking, and the first to help others that may be struggling or having a bad day. Riley takes initiative for her learning and produces quality work. Riley stated, my favorite thing about school is my teachers, my friends, and learning new things. Congratulations and thank you, Riley. Next is Eva Clark, daughter of Kathleen and Jason Clark. She is a first grade student in, in, in Egan Merrill's class. Eva loves gymnastics, dancing, and singing. Her favorite song to sing is, is What's My Name from the, from the Descendants movie. She loves to write at school. Eva was selected as her class's stellar student because she exhibits the characteristics of a stellar student with her love of school and learning. Eva has excitement with everything she does, she strives to be the best student and it shows. Eva is a kind and caring friend to all her classmates and gives the best hugs. Her teacher is very proud of Eva and looks forward to seeing all she will accomplish in her future. Eva said, keep trying and trying and trying until you get it right. Congratulations and thank you, Eva. Next is Anna Lisa Goodwin, daughter of Justin and Elizabeth Goodwin. Is, she is a first grade student in Mrs. Costilla's classroom. Anna likes science and she is good at doing the splits. She wants to play volleyball and softball. Anna likes Taylor Swift and Jojo Siwa. Anna was chosen as her class's stellar student because she has a kind heart and, and she genuinely cares for, for others. Anna consistently goes above and beyond to support her classmates by helping them pick up, sharing, or by praising their accomplishments. She follows the school rules and encourages others to do the same. Anna has a positive attitude about school. She often says, I can do it now, with a big smile on her face. Anna is a shining example of a student who truly understands the importance of kindness and compassion. Anna said, I believe in myself so much and, and other people should believe in themselves too. Congratulations and thank you, Anna. Next up is Wade Kinsey, son of Chad Kinsey and Justine Opry. He is a first grade student in Abby Reynolds' class. Wade likes to play football and soccer. He likes spending time with his mom and playing basketball at night. He enjoys playing games and his favorite is, is Don't Wake Dad. His favorite part of the school day is CK LA and recess, of course. Wade was chosen as his class's stellar student because he has a great work ethic in his classroom. He's eager, he is eager to, to learn new things and is always willing to participate and answer questions. Wade takes his time and completes his work to the best of his ability. Wade can always be counted on to follow the rules and do the right thing even when his teacher isn't watching. Mrs. Reynolds feels Wade is a very deserving, is very deserving of this award and feels truly blessed to have him in, in her classroom this year. Wade stated, school is fun, the teachers are nice, kids should act good at school. Congratulations and thank you, Wade. Next up is, is Adi Crispin, daughter of Mallory Lopez. She, she is a first grade student in Mrs. Freeman's class. Zadie enjoys playing with her family and friends. She likes to play with dolls and playing school. Zadie likes playing outside on the swing set at her grandma's house. She is also involved in ballet and hopes to play soccer in the near future. Zadie was selected as her class's stellar student because she is a great role model for her peers. She is hardworking and never gives up. Zadie always gives a hundred percent, she has a huge heart. Zadie is a very kind young lady and is always, and is always willing to help others. Zadie said, I like school because I get to make new friends and do fun things and so I can learn new stuff. I want to be a school teacher and a ballet teacher when I grow up. Congratulations and thank you, Zadie. Next is, is Jackson Hetrick, son of John and Heather Hetrick. He is a first grade student in, in Mrs. Brittany Coroga's class. Jackson plays basketball and soccer through, through the rec center. He loves swimming in his pool, Jackson also likes playing with his friends and going to the park. Jackson was chosen as his class's stellar student because he is a hard worker and does very well in school. He's a, he is kind-hearted and well-mannered. Jackson has a great sense of humor and has made great growth in his academics. He always gives his best effort with a positive attitude. Jackson stayed up, Jackson stated, when I grow up, I want to be a fireman. Congratulations and thank you, Jackson. Next is Jessica Bore, daughter of Linda and John Bore. Uh, she is a first grade student in Miranda Wammy's class. Jessica enjoys playing with her Barbies, her cats, and going to the park. Jessica was chosen to be the stellar student of her class because she is a very hard worker and such a light in her classroom. She has grown so much this year according to her teachers, who also feels her, her growth will continue. Jessica said, I love to learn about math and writing at school. I also love my teachers and playing with my friends. Congratulations and thank you, Jessica. This, this concludes the introduction of, of our first grade stellar students.
And then freeze for your parents.
Samara Rodriguez, daughter of Jose and Asia Rodriguez. Oh, my bad. That's right, Athens. All right, you're okay. Samara Rodriguez, daughter of Jose and Asia Rodriguez, is a second grade student in Mrs. Beatty's class. Samara enjoys art, especially coloring. She often rides her bike. Samara plays volleyball and enjoys the time she gets to spend hanging out with her cousin. Samara was selected as her class's stellar star student because she approaches learning and excitement and curiosity. She is a kind friend to everyone. Samara is responsible and trustworthy. She is hardworking and focused during class, striving to meet her goals. Samara likes to try new things and works well with other students. Samara said, school is important because you learn how to do hard things. Art is my favorite part of school because we do fun projects. Congratulations and thank you, Samara. Oliver Berger, son of Anisa and Ryan Berger, is a second grade student in Chase Buchanan's class. Oliver plays soccer. He enjoys playing Roblox, Fortnite, and board games with his family. Oliver also likes to color and draw as well as spend time making YouTube videos. Oliver was chosen as his class's stellar star student because he is hardworking, he's a hardworking student who strives to do his best each day in the classroom. He is kind and respectful to everyone. Oliver said, my favorite part about school is learning new things and going on field trips. When I grow up, I want to be an artist. Congratulations and thank you, Oliver. Eliana Guzman, daughter of Estella Guzman, is a second grade student in Stacy Gilbert's class. Eliana enjoys playing soccer. She also has fun doing arts and crafts as well as playing games with her family. Eliana was selected as her, as her class's stellar student because she embodies the spirit of an exemplary student. She is a diligent worker who consistently strives for excellence. Eliana shows compassion towards others and is a wonderful friend. She is always willing to lend a helping hand to her peers. Her teacher feels grateful to have Eliana in her class. Eliana stated, I enjoy learning, doing fun activities at school, and being a good friend. I want everyone to enjoy school like me. Congratulations and thank you, Eliana. Blake Broadstock, son of Thelma Walker, is a second grade student in Amanda Stein's class. Blake loves his cats and playing basketball. When at school, Blake enjoys math and reading. Blake was chosen as his class's stellar student because he is a jet leader every day. He is a great role model for others. Blake has a positive attitude about everything. Overall, he's a great student. Blake is always encouraging others by saying, you can do it. Congratulations and thank you, Blake. Camden Stein, son of Amanda and Zach Stein, is a second grade student in Mrs. Axe's class. Camden enjoys playing Fortnite and playing with his brother. He likes to watch YouTube and play sports, especially football. Camden was chosen as his class's stellar student because he's a very respectful and responsible student. He can always be counted on to do the right thing. He starts his day with a positive attitude and then puts effort into all of his work. Camden said his favorite thing about school is lunch. Congratulations and thank you, Camden. Rosemary Urbina, daughter of Danny Urbina, is a second grade student in Mrs. Carbalo's class. Rosemary likes to play with her students, with her sisters. They often color or draw. Rosemary also enjoys playing house or school with her friends. Rosemary was selected as her class's stellar student because she is kind to others and stays focused in class. She has great manners and works well with everyone in class. Rosemary tries her hardest and can be counted on to follow her school, her school's high expectations. Mrs. Carbalo says, Rosemary is a wonderful student and I'm so lucky to be her teacher. Congratulations and thank you, Rosemary. Chase Pfeifer, son of Nicole and Stephen Pfeifer, is a second grade student in Mrs. Olson's class. Chase likes playing on his iPad and Nintendo Switch. He's also, he also enjoys building Legos and eating snacks. Chase was chosen as his class's stellar student because he is the perfect example of a stellar student. He's a natural in the classroom, but that doesn't stop him from trying his best and putting thought as well as detail into everything he does. He can, he can get along with, with anyone and he can also, he can always be counted on to be kind and helpful. Mrs. Olson has enjoyed seeing his bright and bubbly personality shine through as the year has gone on. She said he was extremely quiet and shy at open house. She, she is proud of how far he has come and is excited to see where he'll go. Chase's words of wisdom are, be strong. Congratulations and thank you, Chase. Adeline Holt, daughter of Megan Willey, is a second grade student in Mrs. Markwith's class. Addie likes to play Twister and Uno Dare. She plays volleyball and spends her time, her free time drawing. Addie enjoys playing on the swings. She likes to color purple and has fun watching Aaron and, Aaron and the TV show. Addie was selected as her class's stellar star, stellar student because she is respectful, responsible, and reliable. Her works is, her work is always neat and she can be counted to ask for help, give her best effort, and never give up. Addie's sweet nature, constant smile, creativity, and participation in themed days brings so much to a cheer class. Her hard work, perseverance, organization, and desire to do well are the perfect combination for success. Mrs. Markwith said, Addie, you can accomplish anything and I'm so proud of you. Addie said, my favorite thing about school is math because we can subtract and add. Congratulations and thank you, Addie. Azu Sana Velasquez, daughter of Ciomara Velasquez, is a second grade student in Mrs. Tracy's class. She loves her family very much. She enjoys playing with her dog and also her baby sister. She was selected as her class's stellar student because she is a hard worker, friendly, and sets a positive example for others, even when school is difficult. Azu Sana continues to give her best effort. She came to LUTS this year not knowing anyone. She made friends very quickly because she enjoys spending time with others. She stated, be a good friend to others so they will be a good friend to you. Congratulations and thank you, Azu Sana. Eliza Prescott, daughter of Kelsey and Josh Prescott, is a second grade student in Mrs. Carrie Wendling's class. Eliza enjoys horseback riding and playing with her dog. She spends time drawing and likes to annoy her sister. Eliza was selected as a stellar student because of her, of her class because she is a hard worker who is very kind to others. She always tries her best. Eliza's very funny and goofy. She makes her teacher laugh daily and is an amazing little human to spend the day with. Mrs. Wendling said, on the surface, Eliza seems like a very solemn little girl, but trust me, she is full of surprises. She has an incredible sense of humor and is finally starting to see for herself just how smart she is in all academic areas. She works hard every day and brings laughter and sunshine with her sarcasm and quick wit. I'm so lucky to get to spend the day with her and I'm, and I'm excited to continue to watch her flourish in all areas academically and socially. Congratulations and thank you, Eliza. Jackson Burling, son of Julia Zucker and Elijah Burling, is a second grade student in Tia Price's class. Jackson likes to play football and enjoys building things. He spends much of his time exercising, running, and playing basketball. Jackson was chosen as his class's stellar student because he is very respectful and polite. He's a diligent work, diligent and hard worker. Jackson is very polite in his classmates, to his classmates and adults. He is friendly to everyone he meets. Jackson said, always be kind to others, including my brothers. Congratulations and thank you, Jackson. Lauren Luke, daughter of Danielle and Keith, Kenneth Luke, is a second grade student in Mrs. Vanderveen's class. Lauren enjoys playing volleyball and swimming. She likes to spend her free time drawing. Lauren was selected as her class's stellar student because she's excited every day to learn new things. She serves as a great role model for her classmates. Lauren is caring, respectful, and responsible, and responsible, setting a positive example for others. Lauren said, never give up. Congratulations and thank you, Lauren. This concludes the presentation of this year's second grade stellar students.
Third grade stellar students. Jaleah Carter, daughter of Bernadette Witt and Jonathan Carter, is a third grade student in Miss Lozano's class. Jaleah enjoys reading and playing basketball. One of her favorite books is Diary of a Wimpy Kid. She also spends time making bracelets. Jaleah was chosen as her class's stellar student because she is a wonderful person inside and out. She is always respectful towards others and handles constructive criticism well. She always gives her best effort. Jaleah said, "I never give up, even when something is hard." Congratulations and thank you, Jaleah. Brayden Dur, son of Julian Dur, is a third grade student in Ms. Davlin's class. Brayden is involved in many sports, including flag football, baseball, basketball, and soccer. He also enjoys playing with his two dogs at home. Brayden was elected as his class's stellar student because he has a strong desire to help and encourage others. He goes out of his way to praise his classmates for their accomplishments and has natural willingness to help other students. His teacher loves seeing the way he treats his peers each day. These qualities will help him in whatever he chooses to do in life. Brayden said, "I just like to help other people because they might not understand something. So if I do, then I can help them." Congratulations and thank you, Brayden. Jasmaria Spears, daughter of Jerika Spears, is a third grade student in Ms. Lowry's class. Jasmaria likes to play soccer and she cheers for top-notch. When she grows up, she wants to be a scientist and study space. Jasmaria was chosen as her class's stellar student because she is always striving to do her best work. If she gets something wrong, she wants to learn how to do it. Jasmaria is always willing to help her peers in the classroom with whatever they need. Her teacher can always ask her to help a student or herself with something. She is always willing to help. Jasmaria comes to school every day with a smile on her face and a positive attitude. Congratulations and thank you, Jasmaria. Nevea Mestry, daughter of Nicolette Foose and Dalton Mestry, is a third grade student in Brittany Hannidell's class. Nevea enjoys music, reading, drawing, and volunteering to help younger students. Nevea was chosen as her class's stellar student because she goes above and beyond in class. She participates and adds insightful thoughts to her class discussions. Nevea has grown, has a growth mindset and looks to improve on her own understanding to push herself whenever possible. Nevea is kind and is always looking for ways to help others be successful as well. Ms. Hannidell said, "I am privileged to be Nevea's teacher. Her work ethic and positivity are contagious." Congratulations and thank you, Nevea. Bianca Santiago, daughter of Sonia and Pablo Santiago, is a third grade student in Amelia Lewis's class. Bianca likes to watch TV and make crafts with her mom. She enjoys swimming whenever she can. Bianca was selected as her class's stellar student because she is a very kind and caring person who always strives to do her best. She is very hardworking and consistently follows expectations in the school and her classroom. Bianca sets a positive example for others. Bianca said, "Be kind to everyone." Congratulations and thank you, Bianca. Thomas Kaiser, son of Elizabeth and Ed Kaiser, is a third grade student in Nicholas Miley's class. Tommy is involved in many sports. He plays football and basketball. Tommy also plays soccer. He is in the Men With Manners Club, and in his free time, Tommy enjoys playing video games and playing basketball on his mini hoop. Tommy was chosen as his class's stellar student because he is a model student. He is caring, hardworking, friendly, and driven. Tommy always has a positive attitude and sets wonderful examples for others. His teacher said, "Tommy is known as Green Ranger in my class. He is a bona fide leader and he should be very proud of himself. Tommy will continue to grow and has potential to do anything." Congratulations and thank you, Tommy. Hayden Konig, son of Jennifer and Nathan Konig, is a third grade student in Ms. Morris's class. Hayden likes to run around outside. He enjoys football and soccer. He also likes Roblox. Hayden was selected as his class's stellar student because he is an exceptional student. He gives 110% every day. Hayden is kind to others each morning. He has a smile and a hug for his teacher. When Hayden is feeling frustrated, he stops and takes a breath and tells himself, "I got this." Congratulations and thank you, Hayden. Nova Jones, daughter of Abby Sheehan, is a third grade student in Ashley Gonzalez's class. Nova is a member of Art Club at LUTS. She enjoys running and playing with her siblings. Nova was chosen as her class's stellar student because Nova excels academically. She displays leadership and initiative as well as out of the classroom. Nova volunteers to help others demonstrating a willingness to contribute to the success of the whole class. When things get hard, Nova tells herself, "I can do whatever I put my mind to." Congratulations and thank you, Nova. Frankie Wallace, daughter of Sabrina and Tony Wallace, is a third grade student in Ms. Grant's class. Frankie likes to play Roblox and also has a fun time playing volleyball. Frankie is very excited to be a great aunt. Frankie was chosen as her class's stellar student because she is kind to everyone she meets. She is an enjoyable personality and always does the best she can in all her work. Frankie feels honored to have been chosen as a stellar student. She feels she knows when the class needs a pick-me-up and is always willing to put her best foot forward. Congratulations and thank you, Frankie. Carson Myers, son of Randy Seeright and Shawn Myers, is a third grade student in Ms. Heather Hetrick's class. Carson likes to play video games, especially Fortnite. He is fun riding his bike outside, and at school, he really loves recess. Carson was nominated as his class's stellar student because he is hardworking. He has improved his grades in the third quarter in multiple subjects and is very focused in class. He has a great sense of humor and sets a great example for others to follow and never gives up. Carson's personal quote is, "Keep working hard." Congratulations and thank you, Carson. Madeline Wilhelm, daughter of Victoria Brooks and Adam Wilhelm, is a third grade student in Courtney Jared's class. Madeline enjoys drawing and learning about dogs. She loves to read books and watch movies about dogs. Madeline also enjoys playing soccer and softball. Madeline was selected as her class's stellar student because she goes above and beyond the average student every day. She works so hard and loves to help her fellow classmates. Highlighting Madeline's work and effort, work, effort, and motivation was when she went to her teacher and wanted to know how to improve her reading skill. In two weeks after working diligently on it, she had it mastered. Madeline's favorite quotes are, "Always give effort and look up, not down." Congratulations and thank you, Madeline. Analia Martinez, daughter of Victor and Barbara Martinez, is a third grade student in Ms. Mindy Hensel's class. Analia likes to play soccer, and she plays all positions, especially liking offense. Analia loves painting. She loves spending time with her family, going on walks outside with her dog. Analia enjoys watching funny videos and playing house with her friends. Analia was chosen as her class's stellar student because she is a hardworking person. She strives for excellence. Analia is very polite, humble, and kind. She is a positive role model for her peers. Analia is nice to everyone and works behind the scenes where she never seeks the attention of others. Analia said, "Otis is a wonderful place where everyone can be kind, hardworking, and love. Never give up and always believe in yourself." Congratulations and thank you, Analia. This concludes the introduction of third grade stellar students.
We're going to go back up into the agenda to the legislative report, Don?
We're going to go back up into the agenda to the legislative report, Don?
Yes. There were, I had forwarded a document to you that had a number of areas. Most of them at the top were dealing with Governor Dewine and his proposed budget. Looks like he, for the most part, is on board with the fair school funding plan and maintaining that through the fifth and sixth year. I think with the House, there's been some positive comments, but also I think they're just kind of waiting to start their debate. And a lot of, a lot of different issues that they're looking at. The Ohio House Education Committee had their first meeting. And they, they're looking at addressing disenfranchised families and parents. And, you know, I think that that's a positive if they approach it in the right way and looking at some of those issues. So I would just encourage you to read over the email that I sent you. And again, there's a copy, or you can obtain a copy at the superintendent's office for those in the public that are watching, if you have any questions. But there's a lot of activities really starting up right now, so that's all I had this evening.
Thank you. No walk-on items tonight?
No items.
Hearing of the public, unless Gina, Abby, or Andrew want to say anything to us. The audience cleared out pretty quick, so we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Mr. Price, board members, I really have no report this evening. I don't know that I can follow our stellar students and come up with anything better than that. Just an amazing opportunity for us to see current, current students that are excelling and doing well and have great things to share. And what a positive and exciting time to think about that is our future students that our district will continue to grow with. And all of the community members and family members that came out to support these young students and just a wonderful, wonderful piece for the district to have so much going on this evening. So I certainly cannot top that. So if okay with you, Mr. Price, I will just continue on with recommendations?
Yep.
Wonderful. Thank you. Item number one, I would like you to consider the approval of the donations, beginning with Nancy and John O'Connor, and ending with the Storage of America. We have a variety of items this evening that will all be put to great use in, within the district, from photographic equipment, shoe hats and gloves and scarves, as well as headphones and computer mice that we will use for state testing coming up.
Can I get a motion to approve item one, please?
Oh, moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. Item number two is just our annual membership to the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Per policy, IGDJ, for inter-scholastic athletics, we must join this membership on an annual basis. And it is this membership with Ohio High School Athletic Association that guides all things athletics in grades seven through 12.
Can I get a motion to approve item two, please?
Oh, moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Item three is a resolution for approving an opportunity for the district to move forward with our agreement with North to move forward with our agreement with North Point Educational Service Center.
Uh, could I get a motion to approve item three, please?
Oh, moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Wonderful. Thank you. Item number four, um, is an easy one for us. This is the second reading for policy BDC.
Can I have a motion to approve item four, please?
Oh, moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally. Any discussion?
Roll call, please. Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Item number five is one of those moments that we get to pause and celebrate for just another second. And I would ask your approval to grant a high school, Ross High School diploma to Anastasia Cipperly. She has met all requirements. I have been notified by our high school administration.
Can I get a motion to approve item five, please?
Oh, moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Um, we have some staff items this evening, starting with item number six. I would ask your, to, ask you to consider the approval of the following appointments. We have some staff substitutes as well as some support substitutes. Item seven, we have some supplemental contracts. And um, item eight, we have a resolution for some supplemental duties. Item nine begins some status changes. Just a reminder on those status changes, um, that for these certified staff members, contract allows them to bring forward um, any opportunity that they have earned additional um, hours, different additional credit hours past what we've had most recently. And their contract allows for three times a year. So October, February, and May, staff members can bring that before you, um, which allows them that status change. And that takes us through item nine.
Can I get a motion to approve items six through nine, please?
Oh, moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Um, item number 10 has two items that are just um, a new position, new title, um, that I would ask you to consider. The first is the Assistant Athletic Director and the second is a Personalized Learning Instructor.
Can I get a motion to approve item 10, please?
Oh, moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally. Any discussion?
Uh, I would ask, uh, Superintendent, um, can you explain the position just a little bit in terms of how that is created?
Absolutely, I can. Thank you, uh, Mr. Nally. So I'll start with the easier one first, um, the one that bears less um, information to be shared. The Personalized Learning Instructor um, is an opportunity that we currently already have in the district. This is a personalized tutoring position. Um, currently, we refer to that as a focused intervention tutor. Um, it is grant-supported and we have them in every single building. Um, we've been able to obtain some additional grant dollars this year and um, in working with the new grant dollars, they did not like the word tutor. Um, so we rephrased things a little bit and we renamed um, that personalized tutoring position to be a personalized learning instructor. So that is simply a name change. All of the duties stayed the same and it's very similar to what we have had in place. Um, the Assistant Athletic Director is a new position to Fremont City Schools. Um, at the end of this school year, we will be um, recognizing, and I think we've already uh, denoted some of the retirements that are coming within that athletic department. And so I have worked closely with our Athletic Director Chad Burnt and our Human Resources Director Susan King. And we have looked at realigning some of those positions that will, that will be vacated. And in an act of attrition for the district, we have combined two positions into one solid position that would now be the Assistant Athletic Director. Um, they will work directly under um, Chad Burnt and will begin to flesh out our athletic department in a little bit different sense.
Thank you. Thank you for the additional information.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Roll call, please. Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Um, item number 11, I would ask that you consider the adoption of a resolution for National Counseling Week. We are celebrating our school counselors this week. We have 15 individuals um, in our district that serve this role. And it's a role that has greatly morphed, evolved, and changed over the years, um, as these individuals come to school, come to work every single day to meet the needs of our students that vary greatly. And they do a fantastic job. So we are recognizing them in the district. I would ask that you approve the resolution to recognize them as well.
Can I have a motion to approve item 11, please?
Oh, moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion?
Uh, Superintendent, I think you hit the nail on the head when you talked about um, the variance in what our school counselors do. Um, another unsung hero of the district. Um, our kids have many more needs than maybe they have historically, and they just look different. Um, so we certainly appreciate the, the hard work and the dedication of all the counselors in the district.
Thank you.
Great. Roll call, please. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Item number 12, I would ask that you consider the adoption of a resolution to, uh, for the district to officially celebrate Black History Month. Um, I can tell you that we have activities taking place throughout the district in every building and at every level, um, which allows all of our students to recognize the great contributions of some of our African Americans, um, that are local within our community as well as within our country, as well as within our entire global community.
Can I get a motion to approve item 12, please?
Oh, moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Um, finally, this evening, I would ask for your approval for a proclamation recognizing Love the Bus Month. Um, I would quickly just draw your attention to the fact that approximately 26 million American children are transported to school in the safest manner that we know, which is on a school bus. And what a big job that is for the dedicated men and women that we have in the district that serve this role. They're the first ones sometimes to pick up our students and say good morning, and sometimes they are the last one to say good night, have a good afternoon, we'll see you tomorrow. So I would ask that you approve the resolution for this proclamation.
Can I have a motion to approve item 13, please?
Oh, moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally. Any discussion?
Again, just kind of the same thing, like our, our bus drivers are like our first line of um, love, uh, to give to, to our students in the district, um, beyond getting them to and from school every day. Um, we have athletic events and, and extracurricular events that our bus drivers, um, work above and beyond to make sure our students get their, uh, there and back safely. Um, and we have a awesome group of bus drivers who are charismatic and hear a whole bunch about a lot of students. Um, just today, I heard a young man getting off a school bus, um, whose mom is ill. Um, and, and he said, my mom's gonna beat this cancer. And the bus driver resoundingly said, yes, she is. Um, what a moment to just kind of accidentally, uh, witness. So shout out to Mr. Warren and, and the whole bus, bus crew.
Absolutely. And just, just an additional side note, you talk a little bit about the extracurricular activities. Um, this time of year with our winter sports happening in all our glory, um, we are traveling and supporting students seven days a week. There is not a miss for our, our buses at this time of year. Um, we have many times on the weekends, Saturdays and Sundays, both, we have multiple trips out. Um, so there's just really is a lot going on. So thank you for.
I can say they get us home safe. Saturday, we were down in Marysville for a wrestling tournament. We had the ice come in Saturday evening. Well, in Marysville, it was raining. By the time we were south of Tiffin, it started to be ice. Then it was full-blown ice by the time we were getting close to Fremont. So I'm not sure who our bus driver's name was, but thank you very much for that safe trip. Um, that was much appreciated for all of us on that bus and during all that ice, so.
I also think a lot of times we reflect back, a lot of people reflect back on their school time and their career. And I, I think we all kind of remember our bus drivers. You know, yeah, the teachers and support people, but the bus drivers are people and they are an important part of the children's life.
Great. Roll call, please. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you very much. Item 14, um, I did share this information with you mid-last week so that you could have this ahead of time. Um, this is your approval for a resolution for OSBA to just make um, some changes throughout our policies. These are just wording changes from the Ohio Department of Education to the Ohio Department of Workforce. So it's, it's really just minor, minor changes. And you can see all of those policies that will be touched, but it's that sweeping change that will um, allow us to move forward and, and be a little more specific about the policies.
Can I get a motion to approve item 14?
Oh, moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second? Second by Ms. Lehman. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Before you move on, um, maybe an introduction of our Assistant Treasurer, since Ms. Parker's not with us.
Justin Elrich, the Assistant Treasurer, going in for Parker's.
Thank you for coming in for Megan, who's feeling a little under the weather tonight. So, um, go ahead and with the report of the treasurer, please.
Been trying to keep up with payroll and all the overtime with the calamity days. It's been really a lot more than normal for our department, at least my side of things with payroll. Um, as far as anything else goes, I wasn't really prepared to tell you guys anything. But from my side of things, that's where we've been, finished up the W2s. I'm sure Megan talked to you about that, getting those out to the employees. That's always a very behind-the-eight-ball type of thing for me to get things done at the first of the year, uh, and get those out to everybody by January 31st. And I know we had them done like the Friday before and got them to all our district employees. And then anybody that's a sub or coach or on a supplemental, we mailed those out that following, I believe, Monday, the 24th. So got all that stuff done and plenty of time and so far, no issues. That was good. Some recommendations, uh, item 15 wants to consider approval of the fund-to-fund transfers. Recommended that the following fund-to-fund transfer be made. There's a handout. Um, the fund-to-fund is for fiscal '25, $325,000 from the 001 General Fund, the '024 Self-Insurance Fund.
We need a separate vote on that, or can it be with, on our agenda, it's with both?
With both, yeah.
Okay.
And then item 16 is approval of supplemental appropriations. As we're recommending, um, changes made to the fiscal 2025 permanent appropriations, as approved on June 24th, 2024, um, the Title I, an increase to 193, 929, and 37 cents. And then the 572 expanding opportunities to an increase to 85,007, 22, and 23 cents.
Can I get a motion to approve items 15 and 16, please?
Oh, moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion?
Mr. Price, it is these grants and item number 16 that ties into that personalized learning instructor, um, job description. Those all go together. Um, and one of those grants will be used specifically at Ross and Atkinson, and the other grant will be utilized in our other four buildings. There will be um, some additional personalized learning going on in all of the buildings under these two grants.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved. Moving on to board member communications. Um, let's start with Sarah tonight.
Um, the, just a couple of things. Um, I guess first and foremost with our stellar students, it's so awesome just to see all of the parents and aunts and uncles and grandparents and friends and neighbors and everybody who supports, um, our kiddos. Um, I always like to point out a couple of things that are, uh, adjectives that are used to describe our students, um, taking initiative, being kind, diligence, and leadership, uh, for the future self-identified teachers, firefighters, and scientists, um, that were, um, proclaimed tonight. And it's just all of our job as a community to support all of our students. Um, we had a great range of first graders through the high schoolers that were up here, um, to assist with that. Um, it's all of our duty as community members, uh, to surround these students and all of our students, um, and make sure that they have everything that they need, uh, to come in here and be, be stellar students. Um, our music department is pretty busy. Um, we are preparing for, uh, we like, I'm part of the music department. Um, the school, the spring musical, uh, hope everybody's ready for some grease lightning. Um, our school musical will be March 21st through the 23rd. Um, and I'm sure there'll be more details coming in the future with how to purchase tickets. Um, as always, a good resource is um, Fremont City Schools website. Uh, the Music Boosters have a website as, or a Facebook page, website, um, to get information on ticket sales as we get closer. Um, our band is traveling, um, on Saturday, the 15th, um, or select members, I guess I should say, uh, for District Two Honors Band. Um, they actually will practice tomorrow, um, onsite and get some instruction from different, um, different instructors from the area. Um, a lot, a lot of times they're high school instructors. Sometimes I think they've had maybe some collegiate instructors. Um, and then Saturday, they'll be together. It's like a workshop, so they'll be together all day, um, with a performance in the evening for their parents. So it's a very condensed, um, opportunity to learn from different instructors, maybe some more challenging music, um, and then be able to perform with only a few rehearsals. So it's a, it's a neat opportunity for our, our students. Um, oh, birds, that's it.
Glory?
Um, well, thank you for the donations. They're always, they always come in handy and then for the photography department, we'll get some good use of it. And congratulations to Anastasia for. And congratulations to Anastasia for getting her diploma. It's always an accomplishment. And for all these little ones out here that came and got their awards, they're so cute and so they're funny to watch. They're just standing there, they're so anxious and they just get so, they are not being called. It just looks on their faces. And I know their parents and I knew the teachers that were out there and the principals are so proud and excited to see them get that stuff, so, and they're all happy, excited to get it. Congratulations to them and keep up the, the hard work.
Lori?
Justin, thank you for, uh, stepping in for Megan. We appreciate it. We like to have new people around. Um, congra, shouldn't say congratulations, thank you Cora Watts for doing the Pledge of Allegiance at the beginning, that was very nice of her to do. Um, yeah, so along with the stellar, the stellar students, um, I myself was listening to, to some of the describing words, um, role models for the peers, caring hearts, eager to learn new things, being respectful, responsible, positive examples. Um, I like that group of kids, well, you know, all of them in general, but the, you know, the little ones, they have to understand that with this world and how it is, they can set the tone for anything going their way forward. And if I could just get that through all their minds, that would be wonderful, but we'll see if we can work on that. But, uh, yeah, I just so those kids know, you know, how, what it, what it means for the award that they just got, and I, and I know that their families are proud of them, but I just want them to be proud of themselves and just really know what it means. So, you know, that goes along with thanking the teachers too for being their role models every day they go to school and teaching them, you know, the right path to take. So thanks to all that. Um, I think that's about it on my end.
Uh, just want to, uh, encourage the children that were recognized tonight. It's great that they received the recognition. Just want to encourage them to continue to enjoy learning, making friends, and being happy. And I think that's, sometimes we forget about that part of it, that we want the kids to be happy. Um, I commend the parents that were here and the support that they give their children. And I, I think those parents can be our strongest advocates and voices out there in the community. And I just encourage them, when they have that opportunity, share that good word of what's going on here, uh, in Fremont City Schools. That's all I had.
Um, thanks to Cora for coming in and leading the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, also, congratulations to all of our stellar students, um, all the hard work that they've put in to get those awards from those teachers. Um, thank you to all the family members that are helping raise those kids to be stellar students. They're putting in the effort to do that. Um, to our teachers and our principals that came out to support their students, thank you for coming out tonight. That means a lot to the kids to see, I know Cora was standing up here with us and she was pointing out in this, oh, I see, and I see, and I, so she was seeing all her teachers. So that's a big influence and a big impact on them to, to see their, their teachers here, so. Um, and also, winter sports are starting to wind down a little bit. Postseason is coming, just good luck to all the teams. I think SWIM is already starting, getting ready for postseason, so, um, basketball, wrestling will be coming up here shortly. So good luck to all the teams here in the next few weeks and spring sports are just around the corner. Maybe if we ever get a break from winter.
Or if it rains.
Um, with that, there's no reason for executive session tonight. Um, so could I have a motion for adjournment, please?
All moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved, meeting's adjourned.[1766.82]